Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Community College Board of Trustees. I am Leah Edwards, Vice President of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters San Francisco. The League is a nonpartisan but political organization dedicated to promoting active and informed participation in government. For those of you unfamiliar with our mission, the League works to ensure that all voters have access to nonpartisan, unbiased information so that they are prepared to make their own informed choices on Election Day. We run free forums such as this, we produce a pro and con guide on local propositions, and we partner with SFGovTV to produce educational segments that explain candidates' platforms as well as discussions on the local ballot measures. More information on these services is available in your program and can be found at our membership table. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates; however, we do take stands on issues. For further information about candidates and election issues, visit the website www.sfvotes.org. Our voter services programs rely completely on the generosity of the community. We do not charge the public for these programs in order to ensure that all voters, regardless of their means, have access to fair and balanced information. If you would like to support programs such as today's forum, please take a moment to make a tax-deductible donation to the League Education Fund and help ensure that the League can continue our dedicated outreach to San Franciscans with free events in communities such as yours. We want to thank our cosponsors for tonight's forum: EATV (Educational Access Television), which is operated at City College of San Francisco, our venue; City College of San Francisco Ocean Campus Studio A. This candid forum is being recorded for later cablecast on EATV-1 and EATV-2 and also on U-verse. Please check the website for more information at www.ccsf.edu/EA TV. The League's comprehensive, nonpartisan election information, including ballot analysis, is also available at sfvotes.org and on our YouTube site. It is my pleasure to introduce our moderator for this evening, Allison Washburn. Allison Washburn is a longtime member and past president of the League of Women Voters San Francisco, has moderated numerous debates over the years. She was also a League appointee to the Sunshine Ordinance Task Force, on which she served for eight years, chairing it for two. Allison is currently the Chair of the Steering Committee to Qualify a League-endorced Initiative to Update and Amend the Sunshine Ordinance for a Future Ballot. She is also past president of the Boards on WYCA of San Francisco-Morin and the OWL San Francisco, and she now serves on the Board of the Aquatic Park Neighborhood Association. Dr. Washburn received her PhD in Experimental Psychology from Johns Hopkins and is now an Associate Professor of Psychology and Gerontology at National University, as well as an adjunct faculty member at Saybrook University. She has lived in San Francisco since 1984, moving here from Maryland with her two young children, who now live in the East Bay with their growing families. We are honored to welcome Allison Washburn.
This November 8th, voters will be asked to vote for up to four candidates for open seats on the Community College Board of Trustees, so there are four open seats. This evening, you will hear from some of the candidates for these seats: Amy Bakarach, Alex Randolph, and Chanelle Williams. They will have a chance to present their views at this forum on issues affecting the community college and to answer your questions about those issues. Here are the procedures for the forum. The candidates will each have one minute to answer questions that you and the audience have submitted, as well as questions that have been submitted to the League of Women Voters website. Each candidate will answer every question. Any rebuttals that you have may be included in your closing statement. The timekeepers in the first row will hold up a yellow card to signify to the candidates that they have 15 minutes remaining and will hold up a red card when it's time to stop. Every aspect of the forum will be equally fair to all candidates. You have many important decisions to make on November 8th. Tonight's forum will give you an opportunity to be heard, so let's begin. The first question, which you all will answer, will go to Ms. Bakarach first, then Mr. Randolph, then Ms. Williams. The next question will go to Mr. Randolph and we'll rotate in that order and I'll try not to get lost. Okay, so the first question to Ms. Bakarach. What, in your experience, makes you qualified to serve on the Community College Board?
Well, first, thank you so much to the League for having us here. We all, I'm sure, appreciate being here, and of course, thanks to City College Department, the Creative Arts Department, and to all of the staff here who are doing this. So I am running for reelection to the Community College Board, and I'm running for reelection because I'm passionate about higher education. I'm a living, breathing example of the opportunities that higher education can give to people. I went from high school dropout to PhD in less than 20 years. I now do policy research, which provides me the opportunity to bring an evidence-based approach, data-driven decision-making, to all of my decisions that I make. I'm a policy expert, and I also taught for about seven years as an adjunct professor, so I bring a faculty perspective as well. I'm...I...my time is gonna be up.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Yes, thank you so much for hosting us here tonight. It's been very exciting to serve on the Community College Board for the past 18 months as your trustee. And as someone who benefited from a community college education, who is a first-generation college graduate, from parents, working-class parents, who never had the chance to go to college, education has always been very important in my family, and that's the perspective that I have brought over to the Board of Trustees for the past 18 months. Since day one, I have focused on making sure that City College keeps open and accredited and continues to serve our community as an affordable and accessible institution in this incredibly diverse city. I'm one of the youngest trustees in the state and in the country. I have the unique ability to directly reach out to our students that we serve here on a daily basis at City College, and able to connect with them and show with them how my personal education background benefited me to be here today as a trustee at City College. I take great pride in our institution, and I look forward to serving you for another four years.
Ms. Williams.
Great, well, thank you, of course, to the League of Women Voters and to City College. I feel that I'm uniquely qualified to serve on the City College Board because I'm a graduate of City College. I've worked to save City College from loss of accreditation and closure for the past four years. I traveled the country going to Washington DC, excuse me, and all over California to talk to other community colleges about the threat to close down City College, and I've been very proud to do that work. I also served as student trustee for two terms, and I've spent 16 years of my life here in San Francisco as a direct service provider, working to improve outcomes for low-income youth and families. So I know the population that City College serves, and I want to continue to make sure that opportunity is available for all students.
Thank you. So, question number two, and we'll begin with Mr. Randolph this time. What do you see as the biggest challenge City College faces?
Well, obviously, one of the biggest challenges that we have faced over the last several years was our accreditation crisis that was brought to City College by our accrediting commission. That's something that we have really focused on over the last 18 months that I've been on the Board, and I'm so proud of all the work that our staff, faculty, administration, and students have done to really create an incredible self-evaluation report that really shows evidence on how we have addressed, not only exceeding and meeting our standards, the 32 that the commission was concerned about. But I think that we've passed that, so now we have time and the energy and the resources to really focus on the incredible enrollment drop that we've experienced. We lost about 33% of our full-time students over the last couple of years, which directly impacts the budget and the resources that we will have to continue to keep City College open. So I was very fortunate for the past 18 months to serve on the Marketing and Enrollment Committee that has really looked at improving our outreach to our schools, to our outreach to our communities, to, one, build those relationships again and continue to make sure that people come to City College.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I believe the biggest issue that City College is facing right now is our accreditation crisis. We are gonna have a visit from the ACCJC visiting team in the next three weeks, which is a very important visit that will determine the fate of City College's accreditation. The City College is now in restoration status, and being in that status means that there's no other option for appeal. So given that, I think that it's really important that we have a Board of Trustees that are willing to take swift action if the ACCJC decides to continue along the path of terminating City College's accreditation. I also agree with Alex Randolph in saying that our enrollment is really, really important. We need to make sure that we increase our enrollment so that we're not losing funds to govern the college and to be able to reach out to students, get them back in the door, and make sure that they're getting the classes and the services that they need to be successful.
I think that we've been in an accreditation crisis for so long that it's been hard to see past that, but we recently submitted a self-evaluation report, and it's so clear about how we're meeting and exceeding all of the accreditation standards that we're very optimistic and very confident that we will be retaining accreditation. So moving forward, the three challenges that I see in the next few years are certainly enrollment, as my colleagues just stated. We have seen a drop of enrollment. We're down about 10...the entire Bay Area is down by about 10%. City College is down by about 32% in the last five years. In the last year, we're down about 7% of students, so we certainly have an enrollment crisis that we need to address. But we also...the other challenges that I would prioritize are facilities and attracting and retaining good faculty. We're paying them less than what the other colleges in the area are paying, and I think that, once we come out of our budget crisis, we should prioritize that as well.
Okay, you're causing me to think on my feet here and juggle questions around in light of what you've been talking about. So, question number three, we'll go first to Ms. Williams. And all of you mentioned the drop in enrollment, so this question addresses that in part. How will you approach marketing? It's the first part of the question. Do you think hiring a...excuse me, I'm not sure if it says PR, maybe PR or Marketing Director, do you think hiring such a person is a good idea? Ms. Williams.
I think that, in terms of increasing our enrollment, we need to think about the way that we're presenting our offerings. I think that we're in the most expensive city in the country, and then, of course, in the Bay Area and in California, and we need to think about who we're serving. We're serving working adults, those that have families, that have a lot of expenses, and paying for rent in the city, I mean, an average apartment goes for about $3,500 a month, which is very out of reach for many, many individuals. So I think that we need to be offering our courses in the evenings and the weekends, and also looking at increasing our online course loads. I also feel that we need a dedicated person that's working on governmental partnerships and our business relationships. I think that it's not only about marketing and PR, it's also about looking at our partners like City and County of San Francisco. Can we get city workers to enroll at City College? Can we get partnerships with the fire department, with the police department, and others to really boost our enrollment? So there's really creative ways that we can do this, and I think that the current administration is looking at a lot of those options.
Ms. Bakarach.
Well, I agree with Chanelle Williams. There's a lot of opportunity out there for us to grow enrollment. As far as a marketing plan, we are working with a marketing consultant. We'll be looking at future directions soon, I think, in the next few months. I do think that we should be hiring...I'm not sure if you meant like a Public Information Officer or...
Maybe that's what...yeah.
Yeah, I do think that we need to fill that position. I'm not sure if that's directly related to marketing, but I think that we have a lot of opportunity in growing our enrollment in a lot of different ways. One example is with our high school students. I was really surprised to learn that a very small percentage of our student population are actually from the high school. We have a really large population of older working adults, which is fantastic, but we can grow that by working with our high schools, and I'm proud to co-chair a new joint committee that, under my leadership, I pushed for with...between City College and the San Francisco Unified School District, and with that, we'll be working toward growing dual enrollment processes.
Mr. Randolph.
I absolutely believe that we have to hire a Public Information Officer, and we are in the process of doing that. When I first joined the Board about 18 months ago, I was shocked to see that one City College did not have any in-house, you know, Public Information Officers or even outreach administrators that were really focused on not only building those business relationships, but also the relationship with the school district and our communities that we have lost over the years of this accreditation crisis. So one of the first meetings, I actually asked the question, "What is our timeline to address those both issues?" About how can we increase and strengthen our outreach efforts, and how can we actually make sure that we have that position of a Public Information Officer filled? When I ran last year and during my time as the trustee in the community, I was really dismayed to hear that most of the people in San Francisco that I talked to, a lot of them didn't even know that we were still open and accredited. That's a problem. Our counselors are not recommending their students to come to City College. That is a problem. So I'm very happy that we finally, as a Board, actually approved a contract to hire an Associate Dean of Outreach, who has been building those relationships, and I look forward to having the PIO come aboard as well.
Okay, so everybody's answered that question. All right, I was getting a little lost here, so I knew I would. All right, question number four, this will go to...it should go to Ms. Bakarach. We have some...okay. How do you propose increasing trust and communication between the faculty, the administration, and the Board of Trustees?
Well, that is certainly one of the key questions, I think, one of the key challenges of this Board after the accreditation crisis. I think that that's actually key. That's really at the heart of everything that we have to do, is rebuild trust among the college, the administration, the students, the faculty, the staff, and the community. I think we start by being as transparent and open as absolutely possible. We make sure that everybody has a voice in the process. We make sure that everybody's voices are heard and that they feel heard. We make sure that we do everything we possibly can to have...that everybody has trust and confidence in the system and in what we're doing. My experience in my day job is that people don't necess...even if people don't necessarily agree with outcomes, if they feel that they have trust and confidence in the system, and they feel that their voices are heard, then it's still...it's a better system. So that's what we have to strive for.
I agree as well that trust has been one of the biggest challenges here at City College. You know, it's very hard to build trust, but very easy to lose it. And I think it starts at the top. It starts at the Board of Trustees. And if you have a dysfunctional Board that doesn't trust each other, that fights with each other, you know, that resonates throughout the college. So I'm very proud that we currently have a Board that is really collegial, that has really been able to work together, even if we disagree, and have really trust in each other, and we believe in the mission of the college. So one of the first things that I did when I came on Board is I really identified that trust was an issue. So I make really sure that I spend a lot of time with the different stakeholders here at City College. I was one of the first trustees in almost a decade to sit down with the student leaders and actually go to their meetings and find out what some of their concerns and issues are, because I wanted to get out of the boardroom and into the streets, so to speak. I meet with faculty on a regular basis, I meet with our classified staff on a regular basis, because I believe, as a trustee, you have to be accessible. Like, as trustee Bakarach said, you might not always agree on every issue, but at least you put everything on the table and you have an open communication, you have an open discussion and a dialogue, and I think that's how it starts to rebuild that trust here at City College.
I agree with my colleagues. I think trust, number one, is built on actions. I think over the past four years with the accreditation crisis, there's been a loss of transparency and a loss of communication, which has now been restored, and I think we need to continue down that path. I also think that putting students in our community first in our decision-making is really important. I think that everyone will feel good when they see that decisions are happening that really empower students and empower the community to know what's happening at City College. I also believe that decision-making is a collective process. There shouldn't be unilateral decisions that happen that impact the college constituency that aren't discussed fully. And I know that there's been some changes in how decision-making processes have happened within the college, and I think that there's been some restoration around that, too. Making sure that we talk to students, that we talk to our faculty, to our classified staff, as well as engage with the community is very important to make sure that all of our meetings are documented. All of the Board of Trustees' meetings should be documented and recorded, and there should be minutes on file that are available on the website, and I think that that's a big part of trust.
All right, the next question, question five, goes to Mr. Randolph first, and this question asks, "What are your views on Proposition B, a parcel tax extension that would provide funding to City College?"
A very, really great, important question, and I was very actually happy that I made sure in regards to transparency that we start recording and archiving our meetings again so that voters out there could actually see the discussions that we were having about our budget, about our accreditation issues, and about enrollment, so that people really understand what's going on at City College. And, you know, we are in an enrollment crisis. We lost 33% of our students, which means that after stabilization funding is ending from the state next year, that we could be losing about $41 million in our budget. And Proposition B is the extension of the parcel tax, which will, if approved by the voters, allow us to receive about $19 million a year in order to pay our faculty, pay our classified staff, in order to preserve classes, and really operate City College for about 15 more years. So we actually have some stability and understanding if we plan our budget ahead of time, what we are gonna be able to have in our budget and resources. So it's a very critical parcel tax that we need to have in order for us to continue to thrive here in San Francisco.
I agree. I think Proposition B is very important for City College. I also believe that Proposition W is another important measure that we need to pass in November. As many of you know, City College is in financial trouble, and we need to make sure that we bring in enough funding to support the operations, and if we don't bring in that funding, we're gonna continuously see students leaving from the college, not being able to get access to classes, to financial aid and other services. So Proposition B, as well as Proposition W, are both really important measures that will be on the ballot this November. Proposition W will also make City College free, which will lead to an increase in our enrollment, and with our enrollment, that brings more funding from the state and gets us away from relying on the state to carry us over, like with the stabilization funding and other measures that have happened over the past years. So being able to pass Prop B and Prop W gives City College back that autonomy and that local control to make sure that we're balancing the budget and we're being independent from state control.
Finally, Ms. Bakarach.
Yes, I am very supportive of Prop B. We're facing a fiscal cliff this year. We've had, thanks to Senator Mark Leno, to whom we're very grateful, we had stabilization funding, and that funding is gonna be running out this year. So we're facing a pretty scary fiscal time, so we need to figure out how to increase revenue. One of those ways is by extending our parcel tax from $79 to $99, and that's with Prop B. So we're really relying on that to be able to serve our students and our student population. I also support Prop W. I've been on board with President Obama's College Promise since he announced it last year, and I was very excited to see that San Francisco is moving in that direction, and I recently went to a conference to learn about all of the College Promise models around the country, and I think that we're really confident that we can implement that here in San Francisco, and I'm really excited about that.
Okay, sticking with matters of the budget, question number six will go first to Ms. Williams and reads, "The City College budget has not delineated the cost for consultants, nor has it separated administrative salaries from faculty salaries. Do you support providing this information, and why or why not?"
I absolutely agree that we need to provide that information to the public. Given that we are in a fiscal trying times right now, we need to be very clear about where the funds are going within the budget, and I've always...I've been speaking quite a bit during this campaign about doing a deep dive on the budget, and I think that we need to continue down that road. I know that the current administration, in speaking with them, there has been a change, there has been a separating out of administrative costs and consulting costs within the budget, which I think is a really great step towards, of course, rebuilding that trust and making sure that San Franciscans and taxpayers know how their funds are being spent, especially with Proposition A, which is the parcel tax that we're extending now. Proposition B, we need to make sure that that continues to happen, that we continue to have transparency around every portion of the budget, that consultants and administrative salaries are clearly outlined so that we can make some clear decisions about where to invest our dollars, and San Francisco taxpayers deserve that.
Ms. Bakarach.
Yes, this definitely goes to the idea of transparency, and we do do deep dives into the budget, and we do have those things parsed out. We are actually...we're one of the best-trained Boards, probably in the state, perhaps in the country, with the accreditation crisis. We went through weeks and weeks and weeks worth of training, and a lot of that training was budget-related, and we do go into all of the nuances of the budget, and those things are parsed out that we look for. But I agree that, as they should be, because that, you know, increases transparency.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you, and I think that's why local control is so important here at City College, that you have a locally-elected Board of Trustees, because one of the things that we stressed, not only during this year's budget process, but also last year's budget process, was to make sure that we are responsive to those concerns and actually are as transparent as we can be with our budget spending and our resources. I was very happy that the Chancellor and our Vice Chancellor actually started having town halls around City College discussing the budget. You know, we have several committees now that look at the budget, so there's a lot of opportunity for input. You know, the residents and taxpayers can take a look at our videos and online archives to see all the discussions that we've had, which I think is very, very important. And one of the other things that the Board of Trustees did this year is to make sure that our citizen oversight committees, both for the bond and the parcel tax, are adequately staffed and have members so that they can actually meet and provide that additional oversight in how we spend our money. So I'm very optimistic that we will continue to provide the transparency and continue to look for feedback on how we can improve.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Ms. Bakarach, and we're switching gears a bit here. What would you do to further develop City College's continuing education program?
Well, I think that, you know, it ties into the overall...in my opinion, it ties into the overall enrollment issues that we have. I think that we're partnering a lot with the City and County of San Francisco, which is the largest employer in San Francisco. We're also working with the Building Construction and Trades and a lot of our other labor in San Francisco to expand things like CityBuild and to...one of my goals is to really work on vocational training for skills building, you know, for people coming back. We also really should be, you know, expanding our ESL programs, not only for just language, but, you know, we've had a lot of people come and talk to us about ESL in things like culinary arts and nursing, so we have to expand those programs as well.
I think that this area, continued education, is one of the areas where we can actually see a lot of enrollment growth over the next couple of years if you really focus and invest in it, because one of the things that makes City College so special is that we have a lot of lifelong learners and adults who come to City College to take all kinds of classes that they might want to take just to expand their own horizon and further their own creativity and their own educational background. And I think we have a lot of opportunities here in San Francisco because we are that lifelong learning or continued education-driven institution. We're not just focused on vocational certificates and transferring people to four-year universities, but we really are that true community college here in San Francisco. And I think with Proposition W and actually making those classes free, there's gonna be a whole lot of adults that want to come to City College in order to take those classes and might discover a new vocational trade or a new pathway that they might want to take and maybe get a whole certificate out of it. So I think that area is really a room to grow, and I'm glad that our Chancellor and administration are actually focused on working with the city and other partners to make sure that we offer the type of classes that people are interested in.
I agree. I met a woman while I was, you know, out in the field campaigning. She had lost her job during the recession and didn't know what her next career step was gonna be, and she told me that she went and enrolled here at City College and enrolled in the... and enrolled in the horticulture classes and was able to get trained in horticulture and then also got an internship through City College. And now today, she's a proud business owner. She goes around all over San Francisco and makes a really great living. So that's an example of how continuing education can really change lives. As myself, as a working adult and someone that pursued my education as a reentry adult, it's really powerful to be able to come back and get that access to a new career because, as we know, looking at the recession and what happened, many individuals, you know, can't rely on the economy to say, you know, that this is a guarantee that you're going to have the same job throughout your career. We have to be flexible and allow for folks to come back and be able to have multiple skill sets and be able to be flexible in this ever-changing economy. And I think that in San Francisco, we have a lot of single working professionals. That's the city that we live in now. We don't have as many of that, the younger high school population, so it's really important that we increase those offerings.
Okay, on to question nine already. And looking at faculty, what can City College do to attract top faculty? As well as more students, but let's focus on the faculty first.
Sure, I think one of the things that we needed to do was, in order to retain and recruit high-quality faculty, was to make sure that we pay them a living wage here in San Francisco. So I was very happy that, yet again, local control is so important, that we were able to come to an agreement with our faculty, you know, faculty union this year in order to give them, you know, a raise, the first time in several years. You know, we were one of the second lowest-paid faculty colleges in the Bay Area, which is incredibly hard for us. And just to give you an example from our nursing program, you know, it's busting at the seams, but it's very hard for us to recruit new faculty in order to teach in that department because we're not paying them what other colleges around the Bay Area are paying them. So it's vitally important for us to continue to make sure that not only we pay our faculty a living wage, but also our classified staff. You know, we have the similar problems in retaining and recruiting them. But the great thing, even during the accreditation crisis, was that our academic standards were very high. You know, our faculty is doing an incredible job. We have high-quality faculty already here. Now we just need to make sure that we continue to retain them and continue to recruit new faculty to City College.
Ms. Williams.
I believe that we need to build housing for our faculty. I think that we have a great opportunity with the Baboa Reservoir to look at creative solutions to this really challenging economy. Most of our faculty can't afford to live in San Francisco, and they travel from long distances to be able to come here and teach because they love City College. In addition to paying our faculty a fair wage and making sure we have adequate work conditions, we need to look at other creative solutions that lessen the burden of what's happening to faculty in the economy that we're in. And so that could be looking at building housing specifically for teachers, for faculty, and looking at other ways we can provide incentives for faculty to come and teach here at City College and of San Francisco. Because, as we know, we are the, we pay our faculty the least in the Bay Area. And that's a shame, given that this is the highest place to live in the country right now. And so to be able to retain faculty, I think we need to provide more aggressive incentives as well as looking at what are the work conditions that faculty are dealing with here in the college.
Ms. Backrack.
I agree with both of my colleagues. Those are all really important things. We have to be able to incentivize and pay our faculty and our staff competitive wages. We also need to come up with creative ways to house them and to provide other incentives for coming here. The other thing is, we have a large percentage of adjunct, part-time faculty, and a lot of them have to go from one campus to another, sometimes from one school to another. They have multiple part-time jobs. So, you know, if there's any way to create scheduling with that in mind for our part-time faculty, even things, we were talking with one of our part-time faculty at the last board meeting, and he mentioned the parking issue. There were parking concerns, and I think that particular parking concern was, I think, easily fixed. So sometimes it's just getting kind of the low-hanging fruit and seeing what we can fix, and then addressing the larger issues.
Okay, I think we're on to question 10, and this one goes, begins with Ms. Williams. City College has multiple locations throughout the city. Do you think that is sustainable, given the budget situation?
I absolutely think that our community centers are very important, especially given the enrollment crisis. We need to make sure that City College is as accessible as possible for our students to be able to get to classes. And by having community-based centers, it allows for students that are living in the Bayview, living in Chinatown, living all throughout the city, to be able to get access to their classes in a way that really works with their other schedules and with their lives. So I think that when we did a study during the accreditation crisis, we looked at all the different centers, and we found that they're actually self-supporting. They actually are paying for themselves, and it's not actually a burden to the budget, but it actually helps to bring enrollment and to bring funding to the college. So I think it's critical that we maintain our community-based centers to be able to provide access across the city for the populations that really struggle with transportation and have very full lives. They have children, they have work responsibilities. It's really hard to get up here to Ocean Campus. Not everyone can afford Lyft and Uber. So I think it's very important for us to maintain that.
Yes, I agree.
In referring to the analysis that Ms. Williams talked about, after that, we actually downsized our centers and campuses quite a bit. So I think that we are at a sustainable level right now, and the centers that we have are very important. We're only forty-nine square miles, but it's a long forty-nine square miles, and it's very challenging to get from one end of the city to another, particularly using public transit. So I think those centers are very important. Also, the centers have different programs. They have, you know, there are different programs that you can find at the southeast, and then you can find in Chinatown, then you can find here at the Ocean Campus. So they each provide different things to different communities, and I think that they serve their communities well, and I think that they're really important.
Yeah, I agree that our centers are what makes City College a true community college because they are almost the anchors of some of their neighborhoods. If you go to the Mission Center, if you go to the Chinatown Center or just spend a day there, you really see the activity and the energy that you feel, that people actually come there, not only to take classes, but to connect with each other, to get some resources from nonprofits that are serving the neighborhood. So I think our centers are really the exciting part of City College that really makes us a true community college that people want to go to. And I would rather stress that actually we should reinvest in our city centers. We should actually make sure that the student resources are at those centers so that people can be successful, and they don't have to come all the way to Ocean to take those services when it comes to tutoring, when it comes to testing or financial aid counselors, and especially when San Francisco's growing. The future of San Francisco, people saying, is in the southeast sector of San Francisco. So, but those are two centers currently, the southeast and Evans, that are not really functioning properly in their old buildings. So I would actually like to see how we can invest in those centers, make sure that the next residents of that area actually continue to have services, and I would love to see those centers thrive as much as others in San Francisco.
Okay, the next question, question 11, I believe, goes first to Ms. Backrack, and it is, what do you see as, this is a more general question, we'll kind of end up on a more abstract level here. What do you see as City College's role in the San Francisco community?
I think that City College plays a really integral role in the San Francisco community because City College is the community. We're, we offer classes for everything, from students from going to high school, going from, students in high school, actually, in dual enrollment, up to going to take classes over the summer or before transferring to a university, vocational and skills training, coding, up to, you know, a tango class or swimming or, you know, things that older adults want to take. So San Fran, so City College really is the heart of the community, and I'm really proud to serve on it, and I'm really proud of all the things that we offer to the community.
I agree. This is a perfect question, so I can point to my button that says, "City College is San Francisco," and that's what it truly is. I mean, there was a report by the Board of Supervisors a couple of years ago that said that City College contributes over three hundred million dollars in indirect activity, economic activity, to the city. And if you spend some time in every corner of the city, you will find someone who either has a friend that went to City College, a family member that went to City College, or themselves took a class at City College. You know, we employ a huge amount of people. We have statistics that show if you actually go to City College, you get a degree from City College, your income not only triples, but the economic activity that you will provide to San Francisco, reinvesting in San Francisco, is tremendous. And as I said, you know, we are, through our centers, really connected to every single neighborhood in San Francisco, and we are that neighborhood hub in San Francisco. So I don't think anybody could imagine San Francisco without City College. You have all these nonprofits who depend on City College for their training. You know, we have one of the world-class hospitality and culinary arts program that provides students and employees to our restaurants and hotel industry. So there wouldn't be a thriving San Francisco without a strong City College.
I love the saying, "Let's keep the community and community college." And I think that City College of San Francisco really represents all the values and all the special things that exist here in San Francisco. And I think it's a space where we have many different generations that can come together. They can come together affordably and really improve their lives. City College has served as a safety net for many individuals. I've heard hundreds of stories about how City College has saved my life. I met my wife at City College. I, you know, my daughter's gone to City College. You know, my grandmother was here. I mean, this college really has touched one in three San Franciscans, which is huge. It's an anchor institution for our city, and it's vital. I think that we have to do everything that we can to protect it and make sure that we preserve the values that we love and that we have known City College for, and especially protecting our seniors, having access to City College is really important for them to have a decent quality of life, to be able to take a yoga class and take a swim class and be able to connect with other people from other walks of life. I mean, it really does enrich everyone's quality of life, and I believe in that, and I think that's why I love City College of San Francisco.
Okay, I have one last question, and it actually will be a good segue into your closing remarks, I think. If elected to the Board of Trustees, what would your number-one priority be? And I'm going to ask that you just indicate one. And this goes to Mr. Randolph first.
Oh, wonderful. Well, other than accreditation, I think, for, at least for the board, for the next year's number-one priority is going to be selecting the new chancellor or a permanent chancellor here at City College. You know, by July 2017, we are going to be having a chancellor that's permanently housed here in City College. And I think that one of the most important tasks of the Board of Trustees is that selection of a chancellor who really reflects not only the diversity of San Francisco, but also understands the unique part that City College plays in people's life here in San Francisco. And we are a very unique place. We have a lot of politics going on, we have a lot of diverse perspectives. And, you know, we currently have a great chancellor that tries to balance all the needs of all the different elected officials and students and stakeholders here at City College. But it's going to be a big task for us. We're going to look all over the country, if not the world, to select the next chancellor. And, you know, it deserves someone who is really focused on making sure that this institution continues to be affordable and accessible for all in San Francisco.
I agree with that, but I also believe that the internal workings of City College is really important to focus on. And I think that we need to look at all the systems within City College, the registration processes, our financial aid processes, student services, really taking a look internally as well as looking at the external issues that we're facing. And I think the chancellor plays a huge role in that. That's the chancellor's role, is to really manage the operations and internal things that are happening within City College. So I do agree that selecting the next chancellor will be a really important task. But I think in between that time, I think continuing on the path to really strengthen all of the systems within City College so that students can get in the door, so that we can boost our enrollment, and so that people feel confident in what's happening here at City College is very, very important. And I think that work still is in progress even before a chancellor is selected. And I think that my priority would be looking at systems and looking at the internal workings within the college.
And finally, Ms. Backrack.
My goal today remains my key goal when I ran for the first time four years ago in 2012, and that's to create an alumni association. There are an estimated one in about seven San Franciscans who have been touched or impacted by City College in some way. And that creates a lot of opportunity in the community for our students, for mentorships, for internships, for funding. I think that there's, having an alumni association will be integral to the future of City College. That remains my, one of my top priorities.
All right, now we have come to the candidates' closing statements. But first, let me remind you that if you aren't registered to vote, please do so right away and urge others you know to register. The actual deadline is October 24th. And if you've moved since the last election, you need to register again at your new address. Candidates now will give their closing statements in reverse alphabetical order. And remember that you have two minutes, beginning with Ms. Williams, then Mr. Randolph, finally with Ms. Backrack.
Well, I want to thank everyone that's going to take the time to look at this broadcast tonight. And again, I want to state that I am the most uniquely qualified to run for this seat. I've spent four years fighting for City College's accreditation. I've spent sixteen years as a service provider here in San Francisco, mentoring at-risk youth, the population that City College serves. I spent two terms as student trustee. I understand the inner workings of City College very intimately, as well as understand the challenges that are ahead for San Francisco and for our school. Given that this is the League of Women Voters, I want to talk a little bit about my experience working on behalf of women and girls at the Center for Young Women's Development. I mentored hundreds of at-risk young women to transition out of incarceration towards brighter futures, and many of those young women are working in the city. They have their children, they have great lives now. They've transitioned from being exploited in the underground-street economy. I also currently work to improve birth outcomes for African-American, Latina women, and I've been very dedicated to women and girls throughout my career. I'm the only graduate of City College that is running this election, and I really am counting on your vote this November. Thank you.
Mr. Randolph.
Yes, thank you again for hosting us here tonight. Thank you for the viewers for taking interest and who are running for City College Board. The past eighteen months have been a job of a lifetime. I really am honored and humbled to serve as your trustee here at City College, which is such a special place for many of us. As someone who benefited from community college education, I can't think of a better role for me to be here right now than to make sure that City College stays open and accredited and continues to serve, to be that beacon of hope for a lot of people here in San Francisco. When I came to this country at sixteen, I did not have a lot of money. I did not speak a lot of English. And college education and community college was my pathway to a career in this country to make a better life of myself than my parents or the previous generations in my family. And I want to make sure that City College continues to be that place for other students here in San Francisco. We're going to have to make a lot of tough decisions around accreditation, around enrollment growth, around class enrollment management. We have to select a new chancellor. So all these important decisions, I will make from a perspective of a community college student and actually understands what those decisions could impact the lives of our students, faculty, and classified staff. As I said, the last eighteen months have been such a joy for me that I could never imagine not doing it for another four years. And I would also humbly ask for your support for this election. You have four choices, and I would love to be one of them. Thank you so much.
Also, I would like to thank the League for not only this event tonight, but for all of their work on behalf of San Franciscans and behalf of women and girls. I have been serving at the City College for two years, and I have been so proud and honored to do so. We are one of the, for the first time in a very long time, we have a very functional, dynamic board, and I'm proud to be a part of that, to be making the decisions. I think one of the most important things that a trustee can do is to know what the purview of the board is. And we have learned that definitely over the last few years since we've gotten our powers back. My background is really in juvenile justice and collaborative justice and human trafficking areas. And I bring that perspective with me wherever I go. I think of the opportunities that community college not only has given me in going, again, from a high school dropout to a PhD, but I think about those opportunities that community college gives to all of the people who I serve and who all, and who everyone serves in San Francisco. Right now, we are at a really hard time in San Francisco, and community college is going to be the key and the heartbeat of bringing our city back. And I'm really proud to serve on it, and I ask for your vote to reelect me to the community college board.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters and our partner organizations, City College and EATV, our thanks to the candidates for participating. I learned a great deal this evening, as I'm sure you did as well. For more election information, please visit the League of Women Voters of San Francisco's website at lwsf.org. Thanks to each of you for taking time to... Thanks to each of you for taking time to inform yourself about all of your choices on November 8th. Good evening, and thank you.